Let's call in order the monthly work session of the Foxby Village Council, October 26th at 4:30 PM. And let the record show that all council members are present, as well as others in the audience. Are there any changes to what we want to talk about today?
Yes.
What do you got?
Uh, Spectrum Internet is, uh, had it canceled.
Had it canceled, alright.
So, I'm just gonna hand this out, so you guys can read later. This just talks about their fiber optic internet service.
Yeah.
Um, and that's yours. Um, we can get into it later, next, uh...
Okay.
The one thing about this...
Anything there? That one.
Okay, I'll talk about it later.
I do have one comment I want to, just, um, the pedestrian crosswalk, um, I did invite Chief Chu to discuss this with us.
Which, okay, pedestrian, okay.
Yeah, just so we do have a kind of a guest speaker.
Yeah, I'm going to add to the agenda, the Declaration of Descent, uh, that Whispering Pines has issued and wants us to do. Okay, anything else out of that?
No.
Okay, since Spectrum Internet is off the chart here, let's go ahead and do assignment of long-range plan and Air Pro 10.
Yes, yes. Okay, so what I did is I went through this, and I just made copies in the, um, notes in the margin as far as who, who would be maybe a logical person to receive, um, the tasks. What we can do is, we can, you guys can look at this offline, or we can go through it right now. It might take us about twenty minutes or so to go through each step. And then what I can do is if we agree, I can make up like to-do list, like year one for this position, year two for this position.
Why don't we try to go through this?
Okay.
Push it back.
So...
Or, an alternative might be, if I review what you assigned for me, makes perfect sense. I don't, I don't disagree at all.
I didn't have a problem either.
Okay, okay.
Did you have a problem?
I have...
He doesn't care.
If everybody's, I don't care.
Because he's not gonna, anything that's assigned to the mayor is just...
It's gonna be whomever the new mayor's gonna be.
Right. Uh, no, I was fine, I was fine.
Actually, if we, if we could take two seconds to look at this thing.
Okay.
Instead of going item by item, look for your particular area and see if you've got any concerns that it should not be part of your duties.
And one thing that I would just like to note is that sometimes I put a plus sign next to it saying, you know, maybe another person would be like working with, you'd be working with either a committee or another council member. And by committee, I meant maybe like the, um, okay, sounds like. Yeah, I know, it just totally left my, uh, the appearance of me.
So Donna, I just had a quick question under inference, infrastructure, pay year one. Um, did you get ahold of the guy from Pinehurst? He was gonna call you back.
He has not called me back yet, after the conversation I had with him. I'm meeting with him on the ninth of November, uh, about some other things, but I'll raise that issue with him again. See if we can get in touch with him, sit down and talk to them. What Janet is referring to is I talked to the town manager at Pinehurst, whether we can hire their engineer for specific things, uh, to help us check new homes being built or drainage issues or whatever. We haven't determined what exactly they can provide us yet, but I've asked if we get a meeting with them and we can sit down and say, "This is what we need, did you provide it? How much do you charge us?" And, uh...
Yeah, can we do that sooner rather than later?
Uh, he's gonna be on vacation.
Oh, is he?
He's on vacation.
Okay.
He'll be back on the ninth, that's why.
Okay.
Probably meeting with him.
Alright.
But he said he would, he would follow up with that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, I know it doesn't answer your question, but it's where we are.
No, you did.
It's where we are.
No, I had no problem. Oh, you know what, I did forget to add something. But I think I can do it here. Can I, can I add something? Under, uh, finance and tax?
Under where?
First pay, long-range plan?
Yeah.
Okay, I probably should have brought this up, I'm sorry. I just wanted to get a feel from everybody. We did get a, two invoices from USA Management, Pool Management today, for this week. Uh, are we all in agreement that we try and cancel them?
Yes.
Well, as far as I know, you had very poor service.
Oh, extremely poor.
And I don't know why we would continue unless, unless they acknowledge that and say they can fix it. If they haven't done that...
Well, let me just say they promised and promised and promised, and nothing ever came of it, so...
There were, there were no penalties.
No, as far as I read in the contract, no. But there, um, there was absolutely no communication with them.
Right.
Unless I initiated it.
I say cancel.
Okay, I just want to get everybody's feeling.
My feeling is support that.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a problem, go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I...
It should, it should have made our...
It got us through the year, but that's about it.
It should have made our life easier, and it didn't make, it didn't make Janet's life any easier, so...
And, you know, it didn't make it easy for the kids either, so, um, okay. I just wanted to get a feel where everybody was, and I will deal with that tomorrow, hopefully.
I went through this, uh, long-range plan, and everybody on there, as far as I'm concerned, is okay.
Okay. Alright, so everyone...
Everybody's happy with it, so Janet, Janet will make a whole...
I'll make a to-do list for each position on the council based on year.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll go from there, and we'll hold ourselves accountable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Very good. That was a good one, that was a lot of hearing from them.
Personal responsibility.
Well, you know, I don't want to, um, add too much on that, other than to say that year, year over year, these plans are done without any accountability. I'm glad that this council has decided to take that next step and place some accountability on it. I think that's gonna serve the village well.
Right, and plus it keeps us focused on what we really should be working on, too. As we said, we were, and a lot of times it's very easy to get distracted with other issues that, um, and we just need to...
I think once you put that together, work with each of the council people to make sure that those are the right things.
Well, they should be, on our work session, you know, they should be going down the list.
The task, and you're gonna sign task, make sure that everybody's agreeing with the task.
Right.
Okay, cool, perfect. Okay, anything else on the, okay, uh, here we go. Uh, administrative job description. There are a couple things flung around.
Old draft.
The old one. Yes, we have the old, okay, so...
I have this one, did I put everybody's box?
That's the old draft.
That's an old one, three, four years ago.
That was when it was first discussed.
That was first discussed, we put this together.
And I just kind of put this together, um, not knowing that this, um, well, not knowing, yeah, technically I didn't have a copy of this, so...
And did you issue that? I just, I don't have that.
I...
The one that Janet...
This one, she, she sent it to us.
Oh, I didn't print that.
You have this one?
Yeah, I copied yours.
I didn't print it out.
Here, give it to me, I'll go make a quick copy.
Thank you. Thanks.
Donna, did you get one of these?
What?
Lisa got it, okay.
Yeah, I did look through that while she was doing that, I did look through that old draft, and I didn't take it long to kind of discount a lot of that money. This person initially, we had him, according to this draft, reading water meters, cutting people off on service and things like that. I didn't, I didn't go too much deeper into that.
But once it, it's all, that, you know, this was all done well before Jesse came on board, so, that's part of the equation, is out.
Well, and I think, I think too, with the, with the old one, and we can, you know, obviously go back and forth, but with the old one, a lot of these things under assisting the village clerk and the zoning administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Legally, the village clerk is the only one that can do certain things.
Correct, correct.
And I think that getting very specific in a job applica, or not in an application, but in the job description that we're trying to find a candidate for, this might be just too much detail.
Correct. I, I absolutely concur.
I think you want to be careful, you, you gotta be kind of specific, otherwise it can be an uphill battle to get things done.
Well, there's always other, other tasks, you always add that, you know, other duties may be performed.
Okay, and this was deeper, I think, I think actually Leslie put these together.
Right, right. So how do you want, do you want to go through my...
There's a new one, and then we can project.
So, I just started out saying the position will provide support for the village of Foxfires, village clerk, deputy finance officer, and the planning and zoning administrator. Candidates applying for the entry-level position should have strong interpersonal skills and custo, oh, interpersonal and customer service skills. Proficient in computer skills and basic desire to work in a team environment. I don't know if we want to add anything else that we think is important to that. And if you think of something days from now, just send it down. Okay, it's a full-time position, and I just...
It's gonna be a full-time position, not a part-time.
I believe it should be a full-time position. I, if it's, if we determine that it doesn't, I just think you can assimilate someone quicker in a full-time position, because there's a lot to learn, number one, a lot has to be learned. There's a lot of things this new person is gonna have to be up to speed on eventually, like zoning rules and ordinances, and, you know, they're gonna have to read a lot of things, too. And, you know, personally, I think a full-time position is better. People really feel it should be part-time, it still should be, I think, every day.
And that's, that's fine, we just have to figure out where we're gonna put this person.
Where there's a back office.
Yeah, what we're gonna do and all that stuff.
Right there, in the corner.
It will fit.
Storage shed, storage shed.
Well, you have to see what's back there.
Have to, have to bring a storage shed.
I think you can put some of it back there, and they don't have to have a full office, but I think for starting out, you can clear out most of it.
Well, you want to give the person the tools they need to do the job.
Right.
Computer, a desk, a door.
And there's a desk in there, and there's...
Phone, all of those types.
And you know what, if, at this point, we don't have room for that, then this hall is not big enough, because we know we need additional...
I think we can put it in that back office.
Yeah.
Uh, where we collect all the crap that's in it. Somebody's gonna have to go through and see which of that stuff we need to keep, and which stuff we can store, 'cause I don't think it'll all fit back there.
We can always put up a shed.
You're very popular, very popular, six hundred square foot shed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had to say it. So anyway, as far as the starting salary, I just put something there.
Right, right, right.
That's something that maybe we can check and see what other jobs are going forward. Right. But, but the thing too is, is that the hourly range really has to be considered with the generous benefits to these people.
Yeah, the whole package.
As well, which is another reason why I think a full-time position would be more attractive, and we can get better candidates, because they also then qualify for health insurance, um, vacation and pension benefits. So, and then career advancement is possible for employees displaying a desire to assume further responsibilities, training and education. I mean...
That's good.
That's, I mean, if we find the right person, very similar to Jesse in our water department, sky's the limit, really, based on education and qualifications and certifications that they, um...
Yeah, well, I, I just wanted to piggyback on that and say, you know, ideally, we would have somebody that could step into the role of either Lisa or Sharon sometime in the future.
In the future, yes, I mean, they're highly specialized, I mean, Sharon is, you know, you'd have to get an accounting degree.
No, no, I'm just, I'm talking about like, like, what we thought with Jesse was, we want him to assume the duties as a superintendent, assuming that he will, he will complete his training requirements and all that. And this person perhaps might have a skill set in accounting or something like that. Because ideally, we, we are gonna need to set ourselves up for somebody, and boy, wouldn't it be great if we had somebody internal to be able to take over a business?
Definitely, I agree. You know, to even separate out planning and zoning from the clerk, you know?
Well, I think the, I think that the, probably the most important thing that we're gonna be faced with, we as a village, in the next five years, three to five years, will be Sharon's retirement.
True, yeah, yes.
And I think whatever person we get, I think that's where we want to put the focus on.
Has she officially announced that, or?
No, no, but she's, she's, yeah, she's at that age, and I think that, you know...
Well, I, well, I've had discussions with her, um, and I, you know, I don't think there's any, um, reason why she wouldn't give us...
Oh, yeah.
An adequate, I mean, a year, two years' notice, really, saying, these are my plans.
Probably in the next five years, it's gonna have to be something.
If not sooner.
If not sooner, yeah.
Definitely. Um, and then, as far as, I'm saying high school diploma or GED for, for this entry level and a valid driver's license. Now, this last item, I don't know if legally we can do this, but passing drug tests and background checks, I know you can do that.
Background check.
I don't know why you can't.
It should be legal.
Alright, I know in my business, that's what we always did.
Yeah.
You know, you had to announce both of those things.
And if you, if you take a drug, don't apply. Have that, we had that sign in our office, the main office, do the tests, and they all failed.
Yeah.
Don't read the sign, can't read the sign, uh...
So as far as job duties, I started out with, um, assist village clerk with various tasks, meeting agendas, village mailings, preparation of documents for council and planning and zoning meetings, and any other clerical duties that may need support. And I think that's the big focus to begin with, our clerical duties.
It's the easiest one to start into.
And it's the clerical duties, right. And Sharon has a lot of clerical duties, too, that can be, um, I think, offloaded.
Well, you've listed some of them.
Yeah, assisting the zoning administration, the zoning administrator with permit follow-up, permit follow-up and inspection. Um, this is something we are definitely lacking in, and I don't believe Lisa does this. She doesn't go out and physically do the inspection.
She does, she does, she does do a quick site thing for certificates of occupancy, but that's it.
Right, but any other, other buildings?
Other things she doesn't.
And as far as following up with, with permits, like if someone took out a building permit for a shed a year ago, and it still hasn't been inspected, then we should be making phone calls, you know? Is this done?
Absolutely.
Well, and that's easy to do, you keep a log.
Exactly, exactly, and that's something that this person, that's something this person could check.
Check the log, right.
We have a log, so, and that could be something that could be done pretty easily.
Right, and you have a checklist of, you know, plantings, you know, foundation, um...
Very important.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Greet and provide services to the village, uh, village office visitors.
Heck, yeah.
Um, assisting with monthly water billings.
Yep.
Process water payments.
Yep.
Assist deputy finance officer with various clerical tasks. Assist deputy finance officer with mailing of water and tax bills and other mailings as needed. And, um, based on skills and knowledge, other duties may be performed.
So, can I refer back to the old one?
Yes, yeah, definitely, I, again, we, I've not taken really long.
Okay, because anything under village park and village pool should be inserted here.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and, and I did all that this year.
Yeah.
Um, and if we're eliminating USA Pool Management, we're definitely gonna need somebody here.
Want to add all of that in?
Yep.
Yeah, put the whole section on there.
Yeah, I, I mean, yes, all of it, and I can work with that person and show them how to do it, it's not that hard.
No, it's not. Yep, that's a good, that's perfect. Yeah, I didn't do anything for the pool, just wasn't on my... And then as far as, um, assisting, um, let's go through this, the monthly reading of water meters, that's not needed any longer. Print and separate, that's in there already, the mailing. Now, contact past due water customers, um, is that something Jesse does?
No, I don't think so.
Well, we don't, well, we don't have any past due, but, but when we do, uh, according to Sharon, that would be something that Jesse would normally do.
Right.
He, he would, if he...
And he does the shut-off notices.
Only if he shut off the water, other than that, I think she just doesn't.
She does the call. Sharon does the initial call.
So the only time Jesse would go out there is if he had to shut it off.
And we love...
And he would put a notice there.
To do that?
Yeah, we've done that.
Okay, 'cause in Illinois, you're not.
Yeah, we have done that.
So you want me to add contacting?
Yeah.
But now, now, well, the, the shut-off notices, Jesse does that.
Yeah, they do the shut-offs.
So the shut-off notices, but at least contact the past due water customers.
Well, and I, and I think that this assist deputy finance officer ma, with mailing water and other mailings as needed, I think that would, I don't know if we need to add that specific line item, to be honest with you.
Yeah, the rest of this stuff, contact...
Because it's already on here.
Shut-off notices and shutting off the meters.
Right, and read the, read the meters, that's not? Assist with preparing mailing, we, we have that already. Um, prepare daily deposits for water and tax payments, now, they can do that, um...
That would be fairly simple to do.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Where's that, um, I will just, I'll add this, you want me to add this?
Okay, now, a process water, oh, process water, that's in, input it in the system?
Yes, that would, that would be the process water payments, yes. So I will add the daily deposits. I'm just thinking about if that's something that we want, if someone's processing the payments, they shouldn't be doing the deposits. That's like an odd kind of thing.
Yes, yes, people do it.
So I think we shouldn't, I think Sharon should stick with the deposits.
Okay.
And balancing the processed payments to the deposit.
She takes the payments, okay.
Yeah, right now, that's what I'm...
Okay, but the clerical person, or the administrative assistant could input it into the system?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then with all that input, you should be able to balance back to the deposit that you've got.
Yeah, okay.
And so I think that, um, the clerical aspect, as far as processing the water checks, this administrative assistant could do, and then the deposit should be shared.
Yes, I agree.
Something I looked at up here on the top of the, of the old list, is something we should decide whether we want to do, and that's maintain a list of new residents and mailing the ordinance flyer, whether we want to have...
Where are you?
Something kind of like the...
Okay, no.
The welcoming committee, I don't think they do that anymore.
Let's go through the village, uh, let's go through this other section. Um, preparing and dispersment of agenda and path of material.
Taking care of there.
Is that...
That's kind of, that's kind of in the number one here.
Okay, okay.
Now, as far as copies and distribution of material for annexations, I don't think that's something that this person should be doing. I think that's more the zoning or the clerk.
I would think so, I think, uh...
That's too technical.
This, not only that, is, there's a lot, there's a lot involved in that, and I just, right now, for an entry-level person, I don't think that's what we would want. Um, set up council meetings, I think that is...
Well, especially, you know, at least sending us emails, get, "I need your agenda items," blah, 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 that an assistant could do that.
Right, right. So do you want me to add that specifically, or just...
Yeah, I think so, because that's, that's important.
So look at your first bullet.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you think it's included.
I don't, I don't know that we need to go through and break those out, I think your bullet does cover that.
Okay.
But I, but I'm just saying, when they, if we get someone hired, make sure that this is on the list of things that they would do.
Thing they have to do, that'd be, that'd be the...
Yes.
A more specific thing.
Well, we'll just add that task to the job description. The job description, this is just an applica, you know, form.
Okay, I'm sorry.
CCR report, that's done by Jesse, if I'm not mistaken. This is the water report, correct? That's already taken over.
It's already done.
Prepare files for all new construction, I don't really know what's involved in that, but...
The whole room full of...
I think Lisa has to do that.
I think we should just, we can maybe add it as a...
Option.
In the job description, as a, to help with this.
As, as needed.
Right, or assist in the preparation.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, organize and maintain the same thing, I don't think that's really what we want this original person to do. Or the entry-level person.
That's all standard, that's all other duties aside.
Prepare new files with, with labels for each residential file.
She could do that, she's just preparing a file.
And I don't know if we do that now?
Do we do paper files anymore?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
We got all the blueprints?
I'll add this to the, to the job description aspect of it. Um, it's, it's good to have it, as far as when we find a, when we hire someone, we can say, these are the things we'd like USAs person to be helping with. Reorganize, same thing with that.
Same thing, yeah.
Miscellaneous filing and purging of documents in accordance with the, and I don't think this person should be doing any purging of documents.
No, she can't take them out.
That's something Lisa's gotta do, so I'm taking this right out. Maintain new list of residents, mailing of ordinance flyer as needed, I, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, I think we should do that, I think we should be more proactive than that.
When a CO is issued, send them a packet.
How, how to find the ordinance is just a, basically, what PB did at one point, was we developed a list of all the things that you should check with the village on before you do it.
Like, before you, before you get certain things, yeah. Is it, is it a welcome package now?
Uh...
Yeah, it's in there.
It's in the, uh, the newcomer's guide, yeah, I think it's in there.
Well, you know, why don't, why don't we mail, I mean, it's probably worth getting an envelope together and mailing it off to the new residents.
It is worth it.
So I, I think that, again...
It's all part of that communication.
I don't know if we have to add it to our, do you want me to add it to the advertisement?
I think we could, no, I don't think we need to put it in the advertisement, no, I don't think so, but that's one of the daily duties or whatever.
Um, prepare the yard waste schedule.
Sure.
Yeah, job description.
Yeah, that's easy.
Maintain the park reservation and signage.
I don't know what that is.
No, okay.
It's a signage.
I don't know what that is.
That's me, take that off.
Okay.
But, I'm sorry.
They do reserve the park.
'Cause I, I had to fill out paperwork here, you didn't do that.
Oh, reservation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, somebody wants to do a box or something.
The signage is what got me off, is there...
I don't know what's signage.
Take the, well, what she does is...
Will the sign do a reserve sign for the...
She makes the reserve sign that you had to put up, didn't she give you one? You should have gotten one. That, yeah, leave that, that's a job description though.
Yeah, okay.
Um, receive new construction permit request and inspect for completeness.
No, no, that's where we're ahead.
That's, that's, yeah.
That's Lisa.
Right, okay, so that's everything.
Okay.
So I will add, actually, the only thing we said that we want to insert the village park and pool and everything else, we're just putting in the job description. Okay.
Would it be, um, or maybe you've already done this, should Lisa and Sharon take a look and see if there's anything that they might provide some input on, maybe?
Yeah, right. Well, now that we, we agree that at least this is where we want to go, I will, I will present them with that. It's always good to get something.
I think at some point, we need to figure out when we want to hire this person.
I think we should put the ad in the paper as soon as we, as soon as...
Because we need to have the budget for everything that's gotta be done.
Well, we do have, we can, we have money in our budget reserved for employee compensation.
Compensation for office equipment, all that stuff, they're gonna need computers, desks, we're gonna have, it'll be a substantial investment. So we need to make sure we got the funds for that, if we're gonna do it in this fiscal year, then we have to do a budget.
We can do a budget amendment.
Do a budget amendment if you want.
We have got plenty, we can do that.
Take it out, okay, that's fine, just one of those things you gotta do.
So that ends, um, that ends that one, okay, so I will incorporate our comments, and then I will go through it.
Look at both of them.
Yes.
And let us know. Very good. And then we need, will you be doing a check on, um, the going rates for these folks?
Yes.
You know what's happening?
Yes. I believe the League of Municipalities has, uh, on the website, they've got charts of what people are paying in different towns and all of that.
Yep, okay, so we know what we're facing with this.
As well as, if you look in the newspaper, a lot of, you know, if you go to Carthage or Southern Pines, they have, you know, administrative assistant jobs opening.
Yeah, they have a lot of them. Okay, any other questions on that? Pedestrian crossing.
Okay, we got the shoe here talking about pedestrian crossing and speed signs and cameras.
All right, before I get into that, the Charger, Chris's Charger, has been on for, for over a month now. I talked to you guys last council meeting and said that all the work was gonna be covered in warranty. That work did not fix the issue. They are now saying there's some axles and some other things, looks like it's gonna be about thirteen hundred dollars to fix that car and get it back on the road and hope that it's gonna hold together after that. My question to the council is.
How many miles on that Jeep?
It's getting close to a hundred thousand at this point.
How old is that vehicle?
It is a two thousand and eighteen model.
Ooh.
What's our projection, your normal?
Well, we were gonna replace it this year and we decided to hang on until next year to replace it. And this is where it gets to that point that close to that five year mark, these cars just start giving up. And this was our first all wheel drive sedan that we tried and that's the problems that we're having is the front wheel drive components on it, where it goes in the all wheel drive.
Why did you get an all wheel drive vehicle in North Carolina?
Well, the town, when we, when we got, we did have a bunch of ISAs noticed, since you've been here, we haven't had it. Believe it or not, we had a home vehicle one day. So, my question to the council is, we were gonna replace that car in North Carolina, we didn't. Are we going, do we wanna continue to just dump money in it or do we wanna look at the option of maybe just go ahead and look for another vehicle?
How much do we have in the reserve? Police car now.
Seventy-five thousand.
I'm thinking it was in the seventy range.
Seventy-five thousand.
But I guess my question is, is who, the, the people that are doing the repairs, they're saying an additional thirteen hundred dollars?
Well, the, the, some of the repairs that have been done already were warranty covered, it's just the parts now they're finding, since those warranty repairs didn't hurt, are parts that are not covered under warranty. And it's just, I have no problem, thirteen hundred dollars is a lot less than thirty-five thousand.
Exactly.
I'm with you on that, I just want to go ahead and put in the council's mind, if this continues to be a reoccurring issue with this car, I don't know how much you guys wanna look at dumping into fixing something that's come off the road in July anyway. So, just kinda putting that, planting that seed with you guys to kinda see.
Well, number one, even if you did order a vehicle now, you wouldn't have it until when?
I've never ordered one outside of water season, so I don't know, you'd probably get one a little quicker now than you would in July, just because everybody in the country has it. At the same time, that's where.
Why don't you shop, you're looking at Explorer or Tahoe?
Yeah, unfortunately Dodge is no longer doing the Charger.
Right.
Florida's no longer offering a sedan.
So you got a Mustang and that's about it or else?
We're not gonna replace this one with a Mustang, not for this officer. It, the most logical choice in my opinion would be something like an Explorer.
Why don't you shop them now?
Smaller SUV like we've got.
Why don't you get some pricey?
I will.
Get us some guidance.
I will, and again, I'm not asking you guys to make a decision.
No, we gotta have some idea what we're at.
But I wanna key you in on what's going on and the feeling I've got with this car is it's probably gonna be continued problem.
Well, you are gonna continue with the, with the repairs for the thirteen hundred dollars, is that what?
Yes, we got to, because we, we don't have a vehicle, we're down a vehicle and we've actually got the part-time officer riding a full-time officer because we don't have vehicles.
That's, that's what I would suggest.
And I just found that out, like, sitting back there just now, so that's.
Well, your plans were to keep that Charger and get rid of the Explorer, right?
That was my plan, but to be fair with you.
Been turning it around, right?
At this point, we'd really get rid of that Charger and do that, because yes, that, that little SUV has over a hundred thousand miles on it, but outside of routine maintenance, we've never had a problem with that little SUV. So I'd hate to replace it with something that we're already having problems with.
Definitely.
To me, that doesn't make any sense.
When was, when were we planning for the next vehicle?
July, July of next year.
So we'd be looking at two vehicles?
Well, no, that's.
We passed that one.
That would be the one that would be replaced.
That was the one.
But we got seventy-five thousand.
But the next one, we got seventy-five grand, if it costs us thirty-five, whatever.
Whether we spend it now or we spend it in July, it's all tap to be repaired or replaced, I apologize. We just, we decided we'd try to wait one more year because we weren't having any problems with it.
I, I would, I think we should fix the, we should go with the thirteen hundred and hope that that fixes what's going wrong. And then I would look to see what a new vehicle would cost if we were to, do it now.
Do it now.
Get.
That's another issue, are, are, are we, can we get contract pricing now is another issue.
Right.
Yeah, that's another.
There's a lot of variables I've gotta find out, I just wanna kinda go ahead and prepare the council for what my idea was exactly that, let's spend thirteen hundred dollars, get the car back on the road, so we've got it. And if we can find something between now and July, go ahead and start looking around.
Now, you said there's like a, is, there's a timeframe that you get to order vehicles, well, how does that work?
Every, every year, the, the manufacturers, Dodge, Ford, Chevrolet, they do what's called a government contract. And they go and they let, the government goes to all these dealers and they submit their bid, this is what we're gonna sell our cars for this year. And they kinda compete with each other, then they say, hey, okay, this is the lowest bidder, here's your dealerships that are gonna be under the contract. Which we've been fortunate, Phillips Ford right here in our back, our backyard has competed with every state contract so far that we've gone to them.
Oh, good.
I'm sorry, Cooper Ford.
Oh, okay.
It used to be.
They'll work with you.
So, you know, I'd probably go to those guys and say, hey, we're in, we're in a, kind of a corner here, what can you do for us?
Nobody else is offering police sedans at all?
No, not right now. The Charger, Dodge has the, the market kinda cornered, I mean, if you, everywhere you went lately, that's.
Well, Ford did for a while with the.
Ford headed with the Crown Big for years.
I've been trying to old Crown Big.
Uh, the Crown Big, my, that car was bulletproof. Uh, anyway, so that's kinda where we're at with the car situation, I'm sorry, I know that wasn't part of my presentation, but wanna go ahead and get that out there.
Okay.
The speed signs, we'll start there. I've reached out to my contact at the Volus, they have made some changes to their signs, they're, they're a lot more sophisticated than the ones we have now. They actually offer dual incoming and outgoing traffic, they can monitor both now instead of being just one lane, like a setup now.
Both ways.
Which would be nice because we can, instead of having to have two signs on one road, you could use one sign.
Yeah.
So that frees up a lot more signs to be moved around. Um, because it'll monitor both inbound and outbound. The problem you have with that is if you're doing it outside of anything but data, the people going by this way aren't gonna see their speed. So that's kind of like catch twenty there, because we're using this more as a deterrent than we are for statistical data. But with that being said, either way, they've got bigger solar panels on, longer, longer lifespan on the batteries. Um, and the software has been upgraded, I don't know all the specifics on the software upgrade yet, I just heard they added a lot more, made it a lot more user-friendly. Different reports, different reporting styles. So they offered that three pack, I sent you guys the email, I received from our rep. And it looks like, in my opinion, the best deal is the three pack deal for nine thousand dollars. I looked at some cheaper signs, well, what I thought were gonna be cheaper signs that didn't offer the, the memory and the, the data collecting. You're only saving four or five hundred dollars on those signs. And in my opinion, you're almost, I mean, that would, that's not a great decision, in my opinion. If you're gonna spend that kinda money over three thousand dollars on a sign, you might as well get one that, that gives you data, in my opinion. Um, so that's kind of my choice, that's what I feel like is the best deal, all-around deal for the, for the village. And a Mustang for the buck. So again, nine thousand dollars is what is the special of the running force on the, on that three package deal. While I'm on the, the topic of traffic control and speeds and signs, uh, we were contacted by a company that specializes, specializes in what's called an LPR, and that's a license plate reader. Which a lot of towns around are starting to utilize this equipment. I didn't know too much about it until we sat down and talked to the rep. These things are nothing short of awesome. It is a twenty-four hour day monitored system, you put a camera up on a pole, a street sign, or whatever you choose to mount your camera on. And every car that comes by, it's running the tag on the car. And it's going into a database, and it'll tell you if that car wanted in a crime, if the car is stolen. I can break it down to, okay, we had a break-in on Woodland Circle between hours of midnight and three AM. I can go to this camera, type into those parameters, and any car that come off of Woodland Circle or in that area between those hours, I can break it down and it'll tell me every car that came through, the owner's name and what the car was. Not only that, let's say you had someone stopping from your house, hey Chad, they were in a red Chevrolet four door. I can go in there and put in red Chevrolet four door between this time and this time, and it'll break it down even further to only red Chevrolet four doors. So it's very, it's, it's very sophisticated equipment. Um, the package on those are, for that specific company that we spoke to, is eight hundred dollars per camera, per year. So I sat down with the officers and we kinda talked about how new we would need, where we wanna put them at to get the most coverage. And we found that if we do two on Hoffman and one on Richmond, all facing outbound, before you get a tight road, you've got every vehicle that comes into the village or out of the village covered with these LPRs. At a cost of twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
Are they solar powered or battery powered, how do we?
They've got different options, that's, that's the kicker, they don't, you can buy the cameras through these companies, but it gets a lot more pricey. They said you can use any camera that you want, so you can go and choose one from Amazon for two hundred dollars, or you can spend upwards of five, six thousand dollars per camera. Everyone I spoke to said, you look, spend between fifteen hundred and two thousand so that the picture isn't grainy, so they can run. I think he said they have, with the, the appropriate camera setup, in our area, we would have at least a ninety-seven percent read rate on every vehicle coming through. The one time you start having problems is if the weather's bad, it's raining, there's mist, or they're on top of each other where you can't get it.
They have to be hardwired?
No, it runs off of cellular data, that's, that's the other thing, it runs off of a SIM card like you'd use for your cell phone. So it would connect to all of our officer's phones, and anytime a car comes through and it pings that it's wanted or anything like that, that's entered into the system nationwide, it's automatically gonna alert us, hey, this car just came through.
Now, who, who, they own the cameras, correct?
No, we would own, we would own the cameras.
Okay.
They're, they own the software. Correct.
Okay.
We're paying for the monitoring and the software.
But the eight hundred dollars per year.
Per camera.
Per camera, but that supplies the camera and then?
No, 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 no.
No, no, we, we would buy the, we would purchase the camera and the camera will be ours for life.
Okay.
We would go and just buy our cameras separate from this program. This, what they're selling us is just their software and their monitoring.
Yep.
That's it, we have to supply the pole, the camera.
What's the interface between the camera and the software, I mean, where?
It goes to their, uh, to be honest with you, that, whenever you started getting into all that, it went into a tech, a bunch of technical mumbo jumbo. All I know is that every tag that goes through there gets ran through their stuff and gets sent back to us. And it's all in a database, I can go back, you know, three weeks ago, hey, we had something go on at this time, I can go back and put that in if we don't have a suspect. As long as I've got a car description or at least a timeframe, I can tell you who came through.
Now, if a car goes through that stolen, does that, you guys get pinged right away?
Automatically, as soon as it passes, it's automatically read within a second or two, and then it's gonna come straight to our phone. So by the time, if they, let's say we have one at the general store, by the time this ran, it comes back, it pings, it comes back to my phone, I'll know it before they probably get to download.
How about driver's license?
No, this is just for.
Doesn't get that.
This is just for vehicles.
It's a vehicle, so.
Correct. Now, you also have to know.
Well, it picks up the license plate, so gives it the order of the vehicle?
Oh, yeah, it gives you everything, anything that's tied to that, that license plate is on that information.
So I have a question. So it's wherever they're placed, let's say on, on Hoffman, you get pinged that this car is stolen. And we have a police officer at the far end of Richmond.
We would then pass it on to the sheriff's office and say, hey, this, this company own a LPR, it's in this area.
But it could turn anywhere?
It could, and it's not gonna be a hundred percent success rate, just like running radar, we're not gonna get every one of them.
Okay.
This is just an additional tool to help us and especially to help us when we have crimes occur that no one was there to witness.
Okay.
Essentially, that's, that's, it's just another tool for us to use, essentially. Those are just some of the fringe benefits of having, you know, we may not know where the, New York has cars stolen every day. We have no idea because we're not in New York, what's stolen or what's not, it could ride right past us and we not know. This is just another tool to help aid us in what's coming through in our, in our village segments.
So, so ballpark, what do you think, so it's eight hundred per, per camera?
Per camera.
And the cameras you're thinking?
So, uh, if, if we go with this company, I, I asked actually for a demo, I signed up for a demo with a second company. I don't know what kind of prices they have, but to give you just a ballpark, I'm going off of our original sit-down with this other company last week. Um, you're looking twenty-four hundred dollars, um, a year for the three cameras, for the service. And then upfront, you're gonna probably pay somewhere five thousand or less for the cameras that we have for life.
For the three cameras total?
For the three cameras total.
Oh, you're talking three, not four?
No, three.
Okay.
Minimum of three, now we could always do more, but again, you're, you're gonna.
Keep asking for the toys, okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna incur more costs down the line. We feel like that with three cameras, two on Hoffman facing outbound traffic before you get the tie, before they can turn off.
Okay.
And one on Richmond, right there by the city limits, you've got all three, you've got them all covered.
I don't know why, I thought you said four, I'm sorry.
So, in my, in my mind, you're looking twenty-four hundred dollars a year minus the cost of the equipment upfront that we choose to go with.
Yeah, and I would definitely recommend the, um, testing them out as far as night vision. Um, and you have to make sure you mount them right so you get the right angle and.
And that's another thing, there's gonna be more costs that I can't tell you because I don't know how much is a pole, the, the poles we have gonna work? Or we're gonna have to hardwire them somehow, there's a lot of costs, you know, they're gonna try to sell you with the lowest price they can.
And are you, you're gonna have to protect them from, you know, damage, theft, weather, the cameras I'm talking about.
The good thing about the damage or theft, obviously be covered by our insurance here at town, but these, according to this guy, they are a hundred percent weatherproof. Should have any problem with their software depending on what camera you go with. Now, if you go out here and you try to buy a two hundred dollar camera.
Right.
I mean, number one, is it gonna be so grainy you can't think out the license plate?
Exactly.
And number two is the longevity gonna be there.
Right.
So that's all factors we're gonna have to kinda sit down and spitball together and say, hey, where are we at?
Now, this company that provides the software, do they also recommend cameras?
They do, he said, but the price goes up substantially with their equipment because they're using top-of-the-line stuff that can read license plates on an eight-lane freeway. You know, that's not something we need out here. It's kinda like a catch-all camera system they sell. Which would be great, but I just don't see the need to.
And I'm sure they're mounted high enough that it's not like someone's gonna be able to reach up and.
Correct, yeah, you're not just gonna look around and take a ladder and lean up against it and take it. It needs to be all up there.
Can we issue speeding tickets on those stuff?
I wish we could, I promise you, I promise I wish we could. But again, these are all tools that we can use, speed complaints, Don Nelson, you're, you're a good, you know, example, you live right on Hoffman Road. Chief, I was out here last night at one o'clock in the morning, somebody come by here at a hundred miles an hour, I can go back and plug in that, pull up that timeframe from twelve fifty-five to one oh five AM. I'd say every car that comes through here, at least now we know what we're looking for.
Okay.
It doesn't measure speed or anything, so.
No, it is just strictly license plate data, and that's it. Depending, someone doesn't have a fake tag on their car that doesn't belong to that vehicle, then you're gonna get bad information, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just, that's just part of the game.
Okay, sounds interesting.
That's all the cameras, can we go into Sergeant Amosquita or, excuse me, Officer Amosquita now, or I have to wait for some second time?
Well, I thought you had pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, that was the main reason I got called.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we go there?
Yeah, we'll go there first, I'm sorry.
Actually, yeah, Amosquita isn't even on here.
No, it's not.
But we knew we wanted to talk about it.
Okay, right, okay. Officer Amosquita, Mike, Michael, officer. Uh, there's usually a whiteboard in here, but I guess it's not here today. Anyway, my, my reason for speaking on the crosswalk, uh, I, I spoke to a couple of you regarding that. The way the crosswalk is, is proposed, um, was according to Lieutenant Garner, I spoke to him, was kind of in the middle of Eagle Drive, going straight over to Pine Ridge Drive, but there's like a median there in the middle with trees and flowers and whatnot. And obviously, you can't start a crosswalk in the middle of the road, it has to come from a roadside. If the council chooses to move forward with this crosswalk, I would highly suggest that the crosswalk run diagonally across from the east side of Eagle Drive to the west side of Pine Ridge Drive, diagonally, if that makes sense to you. Now, there is a culvert on both sides of Pine Ridge, so you need to make sure it runs at enough angle. The only other, uh, issue I have is the, the signage that we're talking about putting in the middle of the road. Absolutely cannot go in the middle of the intersection, it's gonna have to be prior to or after. And for the, the main reason of that is turning traffic.
Sure.
Just doesn't want someone to plow that over and run there, spend a hundred dollars every month trying to put it in.
Well, and the pictures I have, I, what I'm looking at is when you're going westbound on Woodland Circle, and if it's in the middle of the road and someone is turning left to go onto Eagle, that ditch is on the west, northwest corner. You have a truck and they pull it too close.
Oh, yeah, and it's a deep culvert.
Yes, it's very deep.
It's, I mean, you're talking.
I have a picture, yeah, it's deep.
You're talking.
And if it's dark at night, you could have someone driving their vehicle, same thing. That, that to me would be a real problem.
And I guess that's my main safety concern is even if you do run a diagonal, which in my mind is the only way you can make it make sense, because there's no walkway on either side, there's more surface area for walkers, the way we're talking about. But whenever you come across and you do run diagonal, when it comes on to the north side of Woodland, like you're heading back out the outbound lane side.
Yeah.
In my mind, obviously, it's someone following that culvert. There's not gonna be something put there to keep people from, kids on bicycles, someone loses their balance, they fall down into a four-foot culvert. So I just, I wanna make sure that the council realizes that, yeah, the crosswalk's a great idea, I think it's a, a good idea for slowing traffic down, but there is a lot more that's gonna go into it than just put some stripes across the road, put a sign in the middle of it. Um, because there's gonna be some due diligence done on the council's part to ensure that people were not in a lawsuit.
Well, I, 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 I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you that it's a good idea. I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, I, and I completely understand. Would I stick a sign in the middle of the road and put it there and put a crosswalk there? No, I, I, there's no way I would. However, that's the council's call. I'm just giving recommendations and things that I've seen as, as the chief of police and what I feel are safety concerns.
Right, and that's what I'm looking at.
So, that's my, that's what I kinda wanted to hit on as far as the crosswalk.
Okay.
Any questions about that? Okay, Michael Amesquita, uh, we hired him, um, the end of September of last year. Uh, Mike came through us prior to, he's got thirteen years of experience now since he's been with us. Uh, he'd come in with twelve years prior with Lee County Sheriff's Office. Um, has been a first-time supervisor, narcotics agent, um, has taken over all of our evidence control, uh, all of our investigative duties. Uh, he is, uh, doing all of our evidence custodian work, just doing an absolutely fantastic job. Um, nothing short of outstanding. And if I could just clone that guy, I would be in good shape. With that being said, he has all the requirements, all the classes, and then some to be, and in my opinion, it's time to go ahead and reward his hard work and dedication and promote him to the, to the position of sergeant. Um, with that, I would like to request that if, there be a minimum of at least five percent pay increase with that promotion to that position. Not because it's just a promotion, but, um, the amount of responsibility he's taken on outside of the, the responsibility of just being a, a police officer. Um, he hasn't been any kind of trouble, been written up or anything that would keep him from being promoted. Um, so my recommendation and, and where I'm concerned with this is going to be to go ahead and promote him as soon as we can. Um, I'd like to, to possibly go with the first of November, but if the council thinks that we need to wait a little bit to get finances in line, let you have some more time to discuss as far as what you feel like you'd like to do, um, I'm more than willing to wait and, you know, we'll do what we need to do.
What did we do for Lieutenant Garner when we promoted him? Was there a percentage?
There was.
He went to sergeant originally.
Mm-hmm.
And then he's now lieutenant.
Mm-hmm.
What was the percentage that we, we gave him?
Five percent sticking out in my mind with him is, is, is I believe what it was with him.
I have a question. Okay, regarding promotions and so on and so forth, what I'm looking at, do we ever have job performance reviews for any of our people?
I have like an internal that I do with my guys. I have a, a year review that I do.
Okay.
I don't have anything with the town.
Right, so we don't have that for our clerical staff, correct?
We don't, no.
I have it, I have it with Jesse.
You do. And I don't understand why we don't have it for our clerical staff.
Mm-hmm.
Because they're, and they're doing a great job too. And nothing against Michael, okay? This is an overall discussion. But, and I understand what you're saying about a promotion for him, but I think if we don't have job performance reviews, how do we justify, um, raises or, or not?
And that's why I just tried to explain, I tried to justify it is, that's why I explained to you what all he's done as qualification.
No, and I understand that.
So if this is the clerical thing, that needs to be with the clerical thing, not the police one. I have, I have evaluations I do.
Okay.
On my side of the house.
Okay, and that, yeah, that's good.
That's why I'm saying he's met his, his standards.
Every time, anytime I've ever had an employee or managed employees, we had employee files that had performance reviews on a semi-annual or annual basis.
Right.
And, and raises were given out for, they weren't just, it was performance raises, not just merit raises.
Correct.
And I know that this, we, the village does not do that. And I think it should. It's something that we have to put in place. It's not something we can put in place overnight. I mean, we've got to.
And I agree. And if, if you don't mind, let me interject a little bit and give you a little bit of my background. So I came here in two thousand seven. I was a line sergeant in Aberdeen Police Department. I worked there for five years. I came here as a patrolman. Started back at the bottom, just like everybody else has to do, because I do not believe in lateral transfer positions. I feel like if you're gonna, you're gonna promote up, I feel like you have to earn it. Not just because you're my buddy and you're sergeant, I'm gonna bring you as a sergeant. Um, with that being said, I went through the ranks of patrol, master patrol, sergeant, sergeant canine handler, investigator, narcotics officer. And it wasn't until I became chief of police that I got a raise for my promotion. So you're talking about someone that got kicked there in their face. I stayed here from two thousand seven till two thousand fourteen, but not one promotion, not one raise with every promotion I had. And that's something that.
And that's wrong, I think.
Caused a lot of animosity.
Right.
Um, and no fault of this council. But a cost of living raise isn't a, hey, good job, appreciate what you're doing. Uh, but we do appreciate it. But when I, when I knew when I took her in two thousand fourteen, I wasn't gonna let the guys feel like I did. Because I dedicated all that time and energy and money, went through a divorce because I put this place before I did my family, and lost everything I had because I was loyal to this place. And the only thing I got was a cost of living raise in July of every year. And I won't leave it there.
And, and I don't know any police department that runs, worked with a lot of them, and that I don't know one that when you got a promotion, that you didn't get a raise.
Right.
I mean, that's standard.
Here we are.
Well, what you need, what you need is a structure.
And I, that's why I wanna take you back off of what you're saying.
Yes.
That's why I'm trying to take you back off what you're saying. I agree a hundred percent, and that's why I do it next door. Because yes, there should, there should be some kind of, hey, you know, you've done your job and you've done a good job.
Yeah.
Instead of your three percent cost of living that everybody gets across the board, here's you a little something. Just don't get it wrong. You brought that in last year.
Usually going by trying to establish ranges.
Yes.
For each position. And when we promoted people like, um, Lieutenant Garner, when he got promoted to sergeant, I assumed he got a raise for that. And apparently he didn't, just for that. He got into another, another thing. But, you know, I got the army mentality. When you're a E-five, you get this. When you're an E-fifty, you get this. When you're an E-seventy, you get that.
Well, and it's pretty standard for a police department that every time you got a promotion, you got a raise. For, because you're taking on more responsibility and so on and so forth. And, and I think this is something we need to do. And it's not just for the police department, it's for our clerical staff too. I mean, we have two highly trained professionals working here that are on the low end, and so is our police department of our county.
Perhaps, um, Leslie did some work on this.
I don't know. She never, she never said anything to me about it.
And, and maybe that should be a long-range plan.
Right. Well, it doesn't mean that we can't add it to the mayor's, and, and to me, that would be something that the mayor would, the mayor would at least, um, be in charge of that project and working with each, with, with each person or each area, like, uh, you know.
Gary or whoever.
Right, right, that we.
Which, I, I do wanna clarify because I don't want anybody to feel like I'm standing up here and, and just browbeating the council.
No, 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 you're not.
I'm not, okay? I can tell you with a hundred percent honesty that none of my guys have ever come to me and complained about their rate of pay. We need to get in the shop and get rich. We knew we were gonna do justice barely get by. That's not why we chose to do it, was for the money. Just like you guys didn't listen to the military for the money, you did it for the service and the duty. However, just because we don't make a big deal about it, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be taken care of.
Sure. With, no one should be taken advantage of, and you're not, you're not doing charity work, let's say it that way. And, um, I think as far as Sergeant Amesquita, that proposal, I guess what I would say is, is that we would, we would go back and do the math.
Right.
And perhaps maybe at our council meeting, we would be prepared to offer the proposal.
I think that's a good idea.
And to get, and get the council for the next meeting.
We need to look at the next thing on the agenda too.
Yes, yes, yes. So we gotta get all of the things we need.
Well, I knew there was some things coming with Jesse. I was like, you know what, I'm ready to promote him. This is a good time for financial talks. You guys can, that's just my opinion.
So I think.
You guys can discuss it and see what you think, but I think a minimum of five percent is where it needs to be.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else for me? And just for the record, we're here because we love the town.
And we love you.
You love me. You love me.
And we thank you for all the work you guys do.
Richmond, uh, for chief.
Mr. Richmond Road Pedestrian Bike Safety Concern.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I like to flip-flop those just because it makes sense that we were just talking about salaries and.
Okay.
Really, what the chief was talking about was exactly what I was gonna talk about with, with Jesse. As I mentioned, I did institute a review policy with him, and he had objectives and goals to meet, which he has made them, but he's also going well above and beyond that. And I'm prepared to go over item by item with the council. I don't think it's needed. I'm, I'm asking for, I, let me explain what the breakdown is, what I'm asking for. I'm asking for an additional twenty cents per hour based on his certification, for his, his class C certification. From, from David, that's the minimum that, um, wide departments issue when they get that class of a certification. It's a five, it's a, it's five, roughly five hundred dollars, which comes out adjusted to be twenty cents an hour more.
Five hundred dollars over what?
A year.
A year, five hundred a year?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah. So that, that comes out to twenty cents per hour. And again, I'm prepared to go through the laundry list of things that he has done above and beyond what we've asked him to do, but I, I think this council, uh, already knows what he's, what he's done. And I'm not, I'm asking for three point nine percent, which comes out to seventy cents per hour, uh, for Jesse. And, um, that's twenty cents for the certification and then fifty cents, additional fifty cents uh, for a merit increase based on all the things that, that he's done. It comes out to just under four percent.
Sounds good.
And I, I don't think.
Let me work up, let me work up those, again, just like I think what the proposal, we can, I will work up those numbers and we can approve it on our council meeting.
Yep.
And I think that that would be the.
And I don't know if you should, I know you didn't share that with anybody, but I know I've been able to call Jesse and say, hey, can you do this for me? Can you do that? And he's done it. So he's, not just for what you, you got him doing, he's helped me out quite a bit too.
Yeah.
Gary, I think it would be helpful, not that I need convincing, but if you just share that document with the council.
Sure, I will do.
That, that would be great, just so we can stay on top of people's dedication and the, and the work that they do.
I bet you, will do.
Seventy-seven hours, how much a year then?
Uh, one thousand, uh, hold on, one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars.
We can get the money. Why, do you get the money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do. I, I think we do.
Again, we have our compensation fund that is, is.
We did set, did set aside that.
Is, makes it easy for us to.
Well, we're going to, well, we're going to do a mid-year review.
I thought we were when we hired him.
No, that was the first year and we did that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, he's good, he's good for that.
Right, okay.
Now, the mid-year, were we talking about a mid-year review to see whether we wanted to adjust the other salaries?
Well, we talked about a.
It was more of a, it was more of a cost of living.
We're gonna give a bump, a, a bonus or something, or look at that, weren't we?
Was that a class of board for everyone in the?
Well, that's still something, again, it goes to, it goes to merit, you know, performance or just.
Cost of living.
You know, cost of living. And I think without really, um, reviewing people, it's tough. I mean, I know everyone is dedicated in their job. I know that. But we really should be backing up our performance reviews or our performance raises or salary changes based on performance.
Well, I would, I would, yes, you're right. Uh, we talked about a cost of living adjustment based on, as we've all been experiencing the increase, the inflation. And that's why I was, I'm glad that we're kinda separating the two because I wanted to do like the chief did and explain, you know, I think that all our people deserve a lump for cost of living because of the inflation pressures that we're all suffering through. And, and I wanted to make a huge line like the chief was, this is, this is different.
Yes, it is.
This is totally merit.
Right, yes.
Something that we.
Yeah, well, all I wanna do is make sure we put all of those things together when we're talking a dollar of value. We're talking a bump, a bump, a bump, and then we're talking about merit reason. How much money are we talking about? That's the whole, that's why I brought that up.
Well, and I hate to keep bringing this up, but I think we have to look at all of our employees though.
Oh, we do?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I, I just, and you know, I, I think Jesse's doing a great job, but we've got two other people in our village hall that are doing a great job too. So I, I don't wanna leave them out.
No.
No, everyone deserves to be reviewed or to be, um, compensated for their dedication to the job and their performance of their job.
Yeah. All right, good. So you'll have that in our, in our council meeting?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yes.
We'll get together.
I'll work on it.
Excellent.
If I get re-elected.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's a whole different.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all right, now let's go on.
Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is Richmond Road Pedestrian Bike Safety Concern. I, to be honest with you, uh, the maintenance facility at the golf course has been driving a lot of my time. Uh, I did share with the group the background paper that I did as it relates to the, uh, Richmond Road Initiative. Be, beyond what I've already mentioned in that meeting, the only thing that's happened above and beyond that uh, has been discussions with the, uh, police department as it relates to selective enforcement uh, on Richmond Road, and the chief is looking at, uh, stepping up at particular hours of the day that seem to be prevalent with bikers and pedestrians. Beyond that, the only other thing that has, has taken place as it relates to that is, uh, a contact with the, uh, North Carolina Department of Transportation for the sole reason of finding out who it is that would be able to answer questions that I posed based on my summary of the meeting with the chief, specific to those three items. The, the three items were, uh, uh, speed, crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk, and a place to walk. So, and, and again, at this point, all I've done is reached out to that one point of contact that the chief has to ask him to highlight those three areas and then find out who in the Department of Transportation we would need to go to, to begin to open up a dialogue.
Do you remember who you contacted? Can I have a contact name here? Evan McKinnon?
I got it from the chief.
Evan McKinnon? He's been my contact.
You, chief. Dietrich. And this is a, this is, this is a name that I got from the, from the chief. Dietrich is his last name. I just call him Mister. But I do have his first name.
Mister Dietrich.
So I, I don't have anything more to report on that.
You can try that number there, it's him. Okay.
So more to come as DOT responds back.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are you okay with me moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Copasetic on all this. Uh, review of P and Z board recommendations. Got this nice little pile of stuff here. And everybody's gotten copies of Mary. I believe everybody's copied on this. Trying to call a public meeting. It's looking like it's really sitting down to a crunch time uh, to get it done probably before the first of the year. Holidays and Thanksgiving, people going on vacation.
Yeah.
Elections. Elections.
Elections, yeah. We, we do, we do need to call one and, and, uh, has everybody looked over Mary's recommendations and have any comments or questions we need to refer to her?
This is, I think, our third go-around on this.
Yes, yes.
I, I don't, again, I think she's been very forthcoming. I don't have anything additional, me personally. I did have a question though. On, on the public hearing, which, are, is it all of them?
All of these would have to.
Every one of them?
Have to be on there.
Needs to be a public hearing. Can they be in one public hearing?
Over one, close one, over one, close one, over one, close one.
But it can be done in one session?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, like I said, I thought they've been, as we've been making comments and she's been making changes, I think we're there.
Well, I think, I think we, and maybe part of the public hearing is, is that we decide that we're not gonna do something, but the municipal zoning district was something that we said we weren't totally in agreement that we even thought that that was, should be presented.
She did refer to that in her email.
So does that mean that we don't bring it forward right now?
If the council doesn't wanna move that forward, we don't.
No.
Put it on an open.
I don't see the need for it right now.
I don't, I, I agree with you.
I don't either.
I understand what she's saying. Uh, I did have a question, and I was hoping she'd be here, but I just see the email that she won't be, but I don't know whether we get into a spot zoning issue.
For what?
For having this here in one spot and this other zoning in another spot, instead of having contiguous zoning areas. Spot zoning is supposed to be illegal. Now, I don't know if this qualifies, this would qualify for that or not. I don't know. And that's why I was gonna ask her.
Shouldn't.
Well, it's, it, it shouldn't, but you don't know. And that's why I wanted to ask her to clarify.
Well, I guess, I guess the question would be, perfect example would be our water, our water, our pump houses. That's land, that's land that's owned by the.
That's land, that's land that's owned by the village.
Yeah.
What is, what, what is it zoned? What are the pump houses zoned?
It's zoned wherever, wherever we have it.
So if it's RS40, it's...
I don't think they're, I think they're...
I don't think they're separately zoned.
Well, they've got to be, what are they zoned?
I think, uh...
They're not business, that's for sure.
They're not business.
But aren't they zoned where they're located?
Yeah, I think they're zoned where they're located.
So they're right on all the...
The, the, the park is located, is, uh...
Recreational.
As recreational. The pool...
Is recreational, right, but we're talking the pump houses. Right, I'm just, the very basic, I guess, situation, and maybe we do need municipal.
What's the village hall, how's this zone right here?
Business, it's busy.
The pump house should be business though.
But they're, but they're not.
Yeah, I don't think they are. Do you think they're...
But I don't think they should be, I mean...
What?
But the, the pump houses are wherever they are.
Right, they're, if it's in the RS40...
It's an RS40, yeah, but then it's not following the zoning of RS40
because there's, what, there's fences around it, there's, you know, it's a, it shouldn't be zoned residential by any means.
Yeah, true, yeah.
So should it be in a municipal, should it be a municipal zone?
Let, let me just...
That's a Lisa question.
Do we own it? Or, or...
Lisa, I'm sorry, P and Z.
So we need to consider...
I just don't think that we're ready to, if, if we have a meeting in January or in February, we're not ready, I don't think we're ready to talk about municipal.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Doesn't mean that we don't talk about it.
And I'll, I'll follow up with Mary, get an answer back to the council before the next meeting on what those are.
Well, yeah, because I...
That's a good question, that's a great question, never thought of it.
Because there's things that we would allow in municipal districts that we wouldn't allow in commercial.
And that's what, and that's what her argument was.
It, and I get it, um, but I just don't think we're ready to talk about it now. And, and I don't see that there's a big need to push forward, okay, push it through.
Other than the municipal zoning, is anybody have any issues with all of the other things that we're doing? Uh, and we can give Lisa, set up a public hearing date probably for January, I would guess.
Um, the number five...
Because of the time she's got to get out.
The number five, the special use permits, what, what is...
That's just, that's a...
I'm confused about that our allowed special use permits must match what's allowed in Appendix A.
Yeah, this is like the, I think one of the things would be like that tower.
Yes.
The microwave, or not microwave...
Yeah, the radio tower or the cell tower.
It allows it in the UDO, but it doesn't allow it, it's a special use in the table A or Annex A, Table A, Table 6, whatever.
Yeah, tables.
It's not, they're not aligned, and I think that's what she wants, so just those aligned.
Yes. Right, but we don't know what changes have to be made, so how can we have a meeting on it if we don't have all the details?
And we can ask her to specify what those are, that's what she's asking.
But that could be significant. Again, is this something we wanted, we already know...
Well, we're having a special use permit category anyway. Remember when we did that?
We did conditional zoning.
Yes.
You're right, did reference.
You're right, you're right.
So, I mean, we know what number one is because we've already been...
Been through that.
We know what number three is and we know what number four is. I think two and five, we're just, I just am confused about what these two, what five means.
Now, we can, we could ask her to clarify, are you going to be talking through, you could ask her to do that too.
I mean, that's me, if you guys know what's going on, I don't know about five.
Tell me which one we're talking about.
Number five, issuing special use permits.
And, and aligning it with what's in Appendix A or Table 6.
Table 6, yeah.
Special, where are we at here? Yeah, no, I know she's got paperwork for all of them.
Oh, I don't think it was in there. What was it? No, 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 he's looking for it.
I thought she had supporting documents for this.
Supporting documents for this thing.
Yeah, hold on, I thought I saw a special...
Temporary structures.
I didn't see, I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything.
Nothing on there.
No. No, it ended in temporary structures.
Okay, why would we delete that?
Oh, wait.
Okay, so last, this, so this proposed amendment to the special use permits section.
Yes, just at the right here.
It's that last page. So this, this, this is 21, 8, 16, 17, 20, 26, 28. So these are the changes.
These are the things they want to change.
So this is the manufactured homes and parks, caddles, solar generation facilities, commercial rec facilities, wireless tele... Yeah, because remember we talked about, remember we talked about this because she, we deleted the wireless tele, the caddles were already deleted, we told her to take the wireless telecom facilities off. We deleted, yep, yep, amusement parks, yeah, because we went through this and said, oh, we don't, not amusement parks, why do we even have that on there? So what, what's the question?
That's what we're...
Well, that's the whole thing is, is that these should have been taken out of Table 6.
Yes.
Were they? Was she saying that they weren't? Because she's saying it was an oversight on her part.
There's an oversight on several of these things that they didn't combine, they didn't match. They might be on Appendix A or Table 6, or they might be in the, in the ordinance, but they may not have matched. So we have to look at the ordinance to see which one it is. We'd have to look at 28, 21, 8, dash 26 as a, as a, as a, an example.
Yeah, I think...
So in deleting, we're deleting the theaters and alleys and whether we, we need to look and see if that comes on of the Appendix A, which is kind of what we say up here.
Okay, so maybe we do want to go with number five then?
Yes.
Okay, yes, yeah, because we might as well get this stuff out of there if it's, if it's conflicting.
Get it organized and get it off there, yes.
Yep, okay, so we're good?
So we're good?
Just number two, we're gonna take that. We're just gonna take number two out of here.
Yes, I'll get with Lisa and we'll set up all the paperwork we need to do to have a open meeting.
Which, which, we're gonna have a...
Come January.
Go over the five with us, right?
Yeah, well, it's pretty much there, but we can do that. Okay, uh, last thing I added to the agenda is the declaration of dissent. Uh, everybody has a copy of that, I hope.
I read it.
This is, yeah. The declaration of dissent was issued by the village of Whispering Pines regarding the Sand Hill Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, the voting therein, uh, they are protesting the voting structure of weighted votes wherein the village of Pinehurst and Southern Pines have three votes, um, county has two votes, and Aberdeen has two votes, and Foxfire, Whispering Pines, Taylor Town, and Pine Bluff have one vote. And that would be when a non-unanualist vote occurs with the lead, with the, what they call a TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, or the governing boards are calling it now. If they're voting on a project and they have two people that don't vote for it, at that point, everybody has a one-to-one vote. If two people don't vote for that, then it goes to the weighted vote. And so basically what, uh, Mayor Bernhardt has done is issued his letter of dissent to send to any number of people, to include the Secretary of Transportation at the, at the state level. He has asked that Foxfire do a declaration of dissent. And he has also asked Taylor Town and Pine Bluff to do, and they said they will do that. I don't think they've done it yet, but they said they will do it. So the question comes before our council, do we want to issue a letter of dissent? And I sent an email to everybody, sort of giving the explanation?
I, I say no. I will leave it as is because if they go the other way, it'll never, ever, ever get done. It's gonna go to McGinnis and all those people that are going there and get big to countywide, and I don't think we'd want that. And we already talked about it and we agreed, we didn't like it. But I think to go to this next step is, I, I don't say disingenuous, but we, we kind of already agreed with what, you know, we, we voiced our concern, they listened, they reviewed, they voted, and we, and then you came back to us and we said, okay, well, we don't want to, we don't want to cut off a nose and bite our face, so we'll stay. And I, I don't understand, well, I do understand, I know he's upset about it.
I fully agree with everything they say here, except...
Except, we've been at this, what, eight, nine, 10 months, we just...
How do the, how do the other MPOs work it?
They work one-to-one vote apparently.
Yeah. See, I, and I, I've always been in favor of the one-to-one vote and obviously not going to fall on my sword for it, but, um, I just think that without the one-to-one vote, you really have no vote in any kind of a conflict because you will always lose, you will always lose in, in this weighted situation. And if the other MPOs are doing one-to-one vote, I think it's rather disingenuous for the towns that are demanding the weighted vote to, to put that on the other towns. I just think that it's, it's a power play that, that isn't very professional and it's not very ethical.
Well, I, I think I knew that other, others were doing this, this, I didn't know that others had said...
I'm field all over the...
And they all, and they're all one-to-one?
No, they're not all, some are, some are.
Okay, okay.
Another thing is, if we, if we go one-to-one, our financial responsibility, we'd probably go up to $2,000 or $3,000 versus 800 now.
I still think that it's worth...
Which is not a big item, but it, it comes in the point, yeah.
It does, but I still think it's worth it if, if you could get a one-to, if you could buy your way in, as it were, at least you'd be on level playing field, but...
I think it's disingenuous to use your word and your word to contradict what we already said we'd do.
Well, we were forced into, well, we're, we are kind of forced into it.
We would do the weighted vote and...
And another thing is, you're, you're thinking that Pinehurst and Southern Pines are always going to agree, and that's not going to be always the case. Let's say road's coming down the west side of Pinehurst and they don't want it, but Southern Pines says, well, it's better there than to come down to my place. Okay, they'll vote for it, Whispering, or Pinehurst is going to be against it. So it's, it's no guarantee they're always going to be together.
No, but if something's coming through Foxfire, you bet they will be.
Yeah, they'll all be together on that one.
Well, probably, yeah. I think the, the, I don't know what will happen if we all do this letter of dissent. And there were a couple of options that had been discussed. One is that the whole county becomes involved and one, another one is that we could be incorporated into the Fayetteville.
See, I...
Then the unit...
Which would be a flipping disaster.
Well, the Fayetteville one makes no sense to me because it's...
Well, they've already tried, because of the... Because there's a contiguous property there.
With Moore County?
With Moore County. Southern Pines and around the vast area of 690, so, so there is that tie-in. And I think that that would be a disaster for us.
I, I don't think having the entire county involved is a bad thing. I mean, it's not, it's just more people involved, but it's also, you know, we're now making decisions that affect that whole county, but yet the whole county is not involved in the decision.
Well, the county has their own RPO they got there. They have a regional planning office, which does the county stuff. So what we, as the MPO, do here has obviously an effect on them because they drive through Pinehurst, Southern Pines, Foxfire, you know, they drive through there, but it's, you know, in terms of the, how it impacts them directly, you wouldn't, that's what the RPO does. They have their own plan. And that's what we would have been had we not been tied into this. So there could be...
Well, the only other option is for us to just go along on the route that we did and see what happens. And if things are not going well, we can, we can leave or we can demand changes and see. I mean, there's nothing to say that...
We can drop out?
There is, there...
Because at this point, having no vote, which really, any kind of conflict, you end up having no vote.
Well, it depends on the conflict, depends on where that conflict occurs.
We still got...
Yeah.
Well, if it's a conflict we feel strongly about, we would probably lose, I would think.
Probably, depending on what, what it was.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know that we can sit here with a crystal ball and say that we're gonna lose everything or we're gonna win everything, because I don't know that anybody knows what this whole thing is going to develop into. You know, we're at the end of our stage on this.
Well...
We've been working on this, what, nine, 10 months now?
Yeah.
Well, none of us like the weighted... None of us like the weighted vote. We did say that we would step up and pay more money, but the other towns didn't want to do that.
Yep.
They didn't want to pay more money. This, this declaration of dissent is probably not going to go anywhere, no matter how many declarations of dissent they get.
No, it's not, it's not going to go through.
What it'll do is, is it attracts the attention of the county and the state.
McGinnis.
McGinnis, who is really, Senator McGinnis...
He's the one that stirred the buzz.
He's the one that wants to do the whole county thing and he and some of the commissioners, commissioners want to do the whole county. So what this does is it opens up, I think, could, could open up the possibility that they just throw out their hands and say, screw it, done with it.
Could they just step in and say, we're gonna take...
Yes, they can, they can step in.
That was a part that I was most concerned about.
They can step in.
Well, then, we, again, we made a decision. Some of us are more bought into it than others, but we did make a decision and we should just stick with it then.
I'm not bored into the vote the way it went, but we have no options.
We really don't have an option.
We don't have an option.
Then.
We had no option on adopting the MOU.
Correct.
We had no option, I mean, if we did, we weren't in the MOU, or we weren't in the...
And they did soften the vote too. It used to be if it was unanimous and there was one dissent, then it went to weighted, but now they have to have two descending votes. So that would take a little bit more in our favor.
It's too bad that there wasn't more descending votes, but regardless of that.
So the, the sense of the council is?
No.
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 Okay, I will so inform them that we have decided not to issue this because...
If it doesn't, if it's not working for us, we can always adjust it in the future, yes, right?
Yeah.
Or try, or leave.
You gotta try something.
Yeah.
And right now, we're not doing very well at it.
No, we aren't.
We have no leverage when it comes to Pinehurst, Southern Pines, 16...
Hey, I'm the commissioner of the board now.
Yeah, he is, he's a commissioner of, he's a chairman.
Chairman right now.
You got the vice chairman.
Yep.
For about one month, one, one week.
Looking on your resume when you go through the pearly gates.
Yeah, exactly.
Are we closing, oh, wait, we have to...
Did you have something else you wanted to cover, did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Wait, wait, we're not done yet, we have public comments.
Yeah, exactly, let me say, any public comments?
I had a lot of attention of making any public comments, but I will. Uh-oh.
My name is Tom McCallum.
Hi, address?
I live in Free Dogwood Court, somewhere in Foxfire.
Okay, so, uh, question for, well, I started, actually, I came because I haven't been to meetings in a while. The Spectrum Internet, what was Spectrum going to do in their presentation? Were they gonna put a tower in? Is that what they're planning?
No, no, we were just looking to talk to them about Spectrum Internet for the village.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the police department.
Right, yeah, okay.
And the pool and the village hall.
Okay. Uh, question on woodland circle, the crosswalk, how woodland circle, is that the bottom of the hill?
Yeah.
And what's the purpose of that?
Slow down, slowing people down.
We got some residential plates. Jeez, I wonder who that's from?
We won't say.
Jeez, you gotta be kidding. Well, in any case, I, I, I was driving in my golf cart yesterday and I was coming up the hill and it clocked me at 117 miles an hour. Okay? And I was in my golf cart. I saw that on, um...
The speed sign, going up the hill, yeah, it doesn't work. Well, it doesn't get enough sunlight, it never works right.
Did you tell the chief?
Only works in the Indian, but four and a half noon.
Did you tell the chief?
No, I didn't have a chance and I didn't want to interrupt this. Yeah, yeah, so that, I just thought I'd point that out.
Or even Don can let him know.
The Richmond Road pedestrian bike safety concerns, uh, that's a state road, isn't it? Isn't it up to the state too?
Isn't it up to the state to do that?
Yep, but we have to ask them.
Yeah.
Oh, got it, okay, you have to put a request in for that.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, what you were just talking about with regard to, I, by the way, I read, I read this in the paper, in the newspaper.
Right.
What you were talking about, um, if you and, uh, say Whispering Pines decided to have a gentleman's agreement that if one disagrees with something, the other one would also disagree with it, would that not help you?
I think that'd be hard to enforce.
And not, and then you don't have to put anything right?
Yeah, I don't think that, that'd be hard to do because...
I'm just throwing something out there for you.